Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Playing Board Meeting of November 7th, 2024. Please join me at salute to the flag.
Proclaim allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231. Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law, knows that 2024 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers. The township clerk posted on the township website and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the township's civic clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are also available in the planning and zoning departments for inspection, according to the public meeting notice. If that may have a roll call of playing board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Mr. Vander, Mr. Vitale, our opposite, Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Mr. Depp?
Here.
Commitment in the potty?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Here.
Vice Chair Peason?
Present.
Chair Sriracha?
Here.
Mr. Voice?
Present.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, welcome, everybody.
Approve.
And ever speak.
First up, we do have consideration of meeting minutes. Meeting minutes of October 10th, 2024. Mr. Bernstein, who's eligible?
All members of the board, except Mr. Depp.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
Second?
Who's second?
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. Any comments from the dais? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Sriracha?
Yes. Next, we have a consideration of resolution. Morton Street Realty Company, File 23-PB-11-SV. Mr. Bernstein?
Eligible members are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Depp, Committeeman Lapone, Vice Chair Peason, and the chairman.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
One second.
Okay. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Sriracha?
Yes. Okay. We do not have any playing board business nor any considerations of ordinances, so I will now move to business from the floor for items that are non this evening's agenda. If anyone would like to come up and provide any comments to the board, please refrain from any direct or indirect comments regarding warehouses, as we know that's what we have on the agenda tonight.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 32155, Camplain Road. You members of the planning board gave approval of the application of M&M at Camplain Road for the all affordable housing development called the Sherman Tract Phase 2, which is on Block 86, Lot 21.02. The Sherman Tract Phase 2 and the Glengarry Development are part of a settlement agreement that was approved by Judge Thomas Miller. Is the Glengarry project allowed to begin development before the Sherman Tract Phase 2 development is built? Because that's the parcel that contains the affordable housing part of the settlement agreement.
If I recall correctly, and I know Mr. Bernstein will correct me, that I think what they needed, they can start building, that the requirement was for them to get an approval on Sherman Tract 2.
The answer is a lawyer's answer of yes and no. They can start building on Phase 1 courtesy of the resolution, but they cannot complete Phase 1 until they have started building and met certain requirements for the building of affordable on the Sherman Tract pursuant to the settlement agreement and the uniform housing controls and the various laws governing affordable housing. So they could start. I don't know if they will start, but they cannot finish Phase 1 before they have completed a certain amount of affordable housing at Sherman.
Okay, you're mentioning Phase 1. Are you referring to Phase 1 of the Sherman Tract or Phase?
Phase 1 of Glengarry.
Of Glengarry. Okay. And at what point has M&M at Camplain Road purchased the Block 86, Lot 21.02 from the township yet? Has there been a resolution or ordinance, whatever needs to be passed, to sell that property, for the township to sell that property to M&M at Camplain Road?
Township committee business, so I...
Township committee doesn't, I don't know the answer to that.
So that property doesn't need to belong to M&M at Camplain Road before the Glengarry project starts?
I think that's, I don't recall the contents of that agreement, but again, any sale of property is township committee business. Fortunately, Mr. Bernstein wouldn't be part of that. That would be the township committee attorney. So that's a long way of saying I don't have an answer.
Has anything started with the Toll Brothers development? I understand they had paid $5 million towards getting an application to build on the golf course, I think. It's under the affordable housing, but there's no affordable housing there to be built there. Has that project started?
I don't know.
Yes, they've started doing groundwork.
Sorry, what?
They've started doing the groundwork, meaning the excavation and all that.
So that Toll Brothers project is starting?
Yes, it is.
On the golf course. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, seen that. We're going to move on to this evening's public hearing. All good?
And Mr. Chairman, before it begins, I'm going to continue my recusal in this matter.
Thank you.
Also, Mr. Depp? Still recues, if you wish, to sit up on the dais. He sit quietly and go. In addition, Mr. Chairman, for purposes of the record, I have a certification of absent board member, examination of record slash eligibility to vote for the chairman for both the July 11th and the September 12th meetings. He has viewed the recordings, therefore he is eligible to participate in this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight we have Homestead Road LLC, File Number 21-PB-25-MSPV. Time of decision is the end of this month. Block 200 dot 10, Lots 32 and 33, commonly known as 203, Homestead Road and 189 Homestead Road. I'm not going to do a review or summary of the application, because I think most folks know what's going on. This application's continued from the September 12th, 2024, meeting without further notice, and I'm going to invite whichever is the first group of objectors. You guys only got two seats, so yeah.
Do you want us to put this?
Why don't we introduce this?
Mr. Genetti?
Yeah, Mr. Genetti, introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Craig Genetti, the law firm, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC.
Good evening. Mike Pissaro, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute.
Scott Gross, objector number 2, Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Brian Tarantino, representing SWAT.
John Lannahan, objector number 4.
Lori Cleveland, representing the Sutherland Conservancy.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes, Chairman, and I'll kind of skip my intro as well. This is a continued application for preliminary final major site plan and minor subdivision approval for property located at 189 and 203 Homestead Road, proposing two warehouses, one consisting of approximately 369,000 square feet and another warehouse consisting of approximately 168,000 square feet. At the last meeting, the objector presented the direct examination of their traffic expert, and it was left that I would begin my cross-examination this evening.
Excuse me one moment. I don't believe we closed. I have two minutes just to summarize and recap before we start the cross. I checked the transcript. I didn't see that we closed. It'll be about two minutes.
I'm not sure what to summarize is. I mean, you had sheets of testimony. My recollection, I'll look at the transcript again. You were done with your direct, and I was going to start my cross.
In the time you're looking, we can quickly summarize.
So long as you're not going to just continue to delve into new stuff. I mean, you can summarize what he wants, but he testified what he testified to.
May I borrow the HE mic, please?
Oh, the HE mic.
Is that going to work? Every time we disconnect.
We did test it today, so.
There we go.
Do I need to be sworn in again?
Yeah.
Do you want to introduce this one? If the night's going to be the truth, we'll talk about the truth.
I do.
For the record, can you state by your name?
Sure. Kenneth Hausman, H-A-U-S-M-A-N.
Yeah, just make sure you state your name.
Thanks. Okay, let me do a two-minute summary of what was presented before. I reviewed the traffic impact study that the applicant had prepared, and there was also supplemental data that was submitted. I reviewed that as well. The applicant used the ITE trip generation rates for warehouse based on warehouse square footage. What I showed and that the IT data truck trip generation was very poorly correlated with warehouse size. The additional data that the applicant collected showed the same issue. And just in conclusion, the proposed trip generation then is not an accurate representation of what the site would actually generate as far as the number of truck trips, and my recommendation that the trip generation work be redone and the resulting traffic impacts be determined.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
So I can begin my cross-examination?
You're done?
Yeah.
We are done. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Genetti.
Mr. Hausman, in your testimony at the last hearing, you indicated that your experience was in reviewing large infrastructure projects. Is that correct?
I have pretty varied experience, that I do have experience in that area. Yes.
But you did acknowledge...
You've got to get very close to your mic.
You did acknowledge at the last meeting, though, that you're not an expert on warehouses, correct?
I am a professional, licensed professional.
And that's not what I... No, I asked you...
My area of expertise is traffic engineering.
And but you acknowledged at the last meeting, you're not an expert in warehouses. You specifically said it.
I am not claiming to be an expert in anything other than traffic engineering.
So now I'll take it as a yes, you're not an expert in warehouses. Have you ever, as a traffic engineer, designed a warehouse or the internal circulation associated with a warehouse?
Mr. Hausman's testimony, I'm sorry, object, is around the area of traffic and reviewing traffic reports, which is what he's done.
I'm asking, I'm trying to find out how much experience he has with warehouses. He talked a lot about warehouses and the different types of operations based upon ITE. I'm asking him if any, he made a lot of assumptions as well, so I just want to understand what his experience is with it.
I don't recall making any assumptions, but I guess you could point those out.
We'll get to that.
I have not designed any warehouses.
Okay. Have you studied warehouses as to their operations, how they run and operate in person?
I did not take any college courses in warehouses.
I think you even indicated that you had to search the Internet and garner some and learn some information about warehouses, correct?
Can you be more specific?
It was his testimony. I'm...
I've used the Internet as a source of information for many things, including warehouses. Yes.
In fact, and even in your report, cite to the 107, page 8, you referred to, you were talking about...
Excuse me, what was the date of the report?
It's the first one, 07, October 6, 2022.
In what page?
Page 8. You discussed kind of your assumptions and calculations of truck trips based upon loading docks and how long the average load time for such loading docks. Do you recall that in your report?
I see that in my report, yes.
And you cited to a cargo loading and unloading efficiency analysis and multimodal transport report, correct?
I don't recall, but, oh, okay, yes.
Do you recall that report?
You referenced this report.
Well, I referenced it. You seem to not recall. I'm asking, do you recall that report?
I referenced that in my report, yes.
Did you read that report?
I...
No, did you read that intermodal transport review report?
I don't recall if I read the entire report.
Do you know where that report was published?
I don't recall.
Thing with the Internet, does this, does this look like the report you reviewed?
I don't recall.
Well, is it the same title?
It appears to be the same title.
Same date too, correct? 2013, 2014?
Same date as well.
And if you look at the top right corner, same publication, intermodal transport review, if you can see that.
I can't see that, but I'll take your word for it.
Now, this report was published in Poland, is that correct? You want to zoom in?
Uh huh.
And it was from 2013, correct?
Yes.
Have you used it in any other study or review you've done in connection with a traffic engineering review?
I don't believe I've used this specific report.
Do you know what, in Poland, what the regulations are or limits are on tractor-trailer sizes?
I do not.
I want to talk about what you testify to and what you've discussed in your reports about, you know, projecting the number of truck trips. Now, in your report, 07, I think also in your testimony, you indicated, let me see. You indicated that our traffic engineer projected under ITE that there would be 322 truck trips, or actually 160 trucks, 322 truck trips, you know, one in, one out. Do you recall that testimony?
You're saying that was in your applicant's report?
No, I'm not. I'm saying you referenced it, I believe, in your report and in your testimony, that our applicant, or that the applicant's engineer projected.
I believe that the applicant engineer did not include the daily number of truck trips in their report. They only included the morning and evening peak hours.
I believe that was suggested by a Panoni report later and then agreed to in testimony.
Correct. So the August 10th, 2023, Panoni Review Letter, page 6, comment 7, that actually notes that warehouse, that warehouse development will generate approximately 322 truck trips per day, 161 in, 161 out, per ITE trip generation. Is that correct?
You're asking, is it correct that it's in the Panoni letter?
No, that's in this Panoni letter.
I agree that it is in the Panoni letter.
In effect, our expert in a supplement report agreed with the Panoni opinion as to the amount of truck trips based upon ITE.
Why are you asking me questions about what your applicant testified?
No, it was your, it was your statement as to what he testified. I'm just confirming, we didn't address it first. It was first addressed in a Panoni letter. We only agreed with it.
So you're stating that you agreed with the Panoni letter?
Correct.
Okay, doesn't sound like a question.
Now, summarize your conclusion. You're basically saying that the use of building size and projecting the truck trips using the ITE land use codes is not appropriate. Is that your testimony?
I think the ITE has established standards about what appropriate correlation to use, and the correlation between truck trips and square footage for the warehouse land use does not meet the ITE standards.
So it's your testimony that ITE does not recommend using building size with respect to projecting traffic?
The ITE is not a book of recommendations. It's a book of data. They also establish some standards to assist the engineer in selecting the appropriate land use types and independent variables to use in their analysis. But the ITE specifically does not recommend a specific independent variable for any of the 900 or whatever there are of land uses.
During his testimony, Mr. Hausman did point out there are some types of usage that there was a correlation.
I'm asking the witness questions. You could address it on redirect, anything you have. You also indicated in your report, and I believe in your testimony as well, that using the number of truck loading docks and truck parking should be used as an estimate for truck generation and is a more reasonable approach. Is that your testimony? And was that in your report, specifically page 4 on 07, which is your first report?
What page is that on, please?
Seven, at the bottom. I mean, it's your report. I mean, that was a big part of your testimonial report. Do you recall that? Simple yes or no question. And also, I mean, I'll read from page 8. As more, as a more reasonable approach, the number of trucks generated should be based on the use of the loading docks.
Yeah.
That's in your report, correct? Do you still, do you still agree with that?
Absolutely. The number of truck trips is related to the number of loading docks. So for example...
No, no, that, you can address it on example. So it's your testimony, and you're staying with what was in the report, that the use of the loading docks is a more reasonable approach for projecting truck traffic?
Can I see what my exact language is?
It's page 8, right below the picture.
Okay.
We need a whole analysis of it.
I would say that is a better independent variable than using square footage.
Does ITE recommend using loading docks as a means for projecting truck traffic?
Again, the ITE is a book of data. The ITE does not make recommendations regarding a specific independent...
Closer to the light, please.
I'm sorry. The ITE trip generation is a book of data. It is not a book of recommendations.
So is your testimony...
The ITE provides guidance, however, when you're looking at the correlation and also looking at the standard deviation for some land uses and independent variables to guide the engineer on selecting an appropriate independent variable to use.
Are you aware if IT has any data on, or collect any data on the number of loading docks at a warehouse and how it correlates to number of trucks?
The ITE conducted a study in Southern California, I think it was around 2016, where they looked at a wide variety of warehouse uses to try to subdivide the warehouse category into more specific functions.
But they didn't say if a warehouse has X number of loading docks, it equates to X amount of truck traffic?
The ITE Trip Generation Manual is a book of data.
I'm asking if that information isn't...
It's not a book of recommendations.
I'm not saying recommendation.
If you're asking me what the IT is recommending, they don't recommend...
I didn't ask anything about recommendation. I'm asking data they collected. Did they collect any data, right? They collected data that said building size equates to this amount of truck traffic on average. Did they say loading docks equates to this amount of trucks on average? Is there any data collected that a traffic engineer could use?
I believe for all of the sites for that 2016 study, they did collect the number of loading docks.
No, I'm not saying collect the number of loading docks. I'm saying similar how in 2021, when they issued their 11th edition and still used building size with respect to projected truck traffic, did they have any data for a traffic engineer to use to say this number of loading docks equates to this amount of traffic? Yes or no? It's either in there or it isn't.
I would say yes, in that supplemental report in 2016.
So that report says if you have X amount of loading docks, it equates to this amount of traffic?
It's a book of data. It is up to the engineer on how to use the data.
So through all the land use categories where they have building size... So, through all the land use categories where they have building size and projected truck traffic, do they have a similar correlation based upon loading docks? Yes or no? I understand they did a study, and in the study, they identified the number of loading docks.
Let him answer the question.
I'm sorry?
Let him answer the question.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, what, what is the question?
Just as the 11th edition ITE manual has the various land use categories and identifies building size and the average projected truck traffic, do they have anything else with respect to loading docks equates to this amount of traffic?
And again, in the 2016 study, they recognized...
I'm not asking about the 2016 study.
That, that is produced by the IT.
He's not responsive. I'm asking about the 11th edition.
He's given you an answer, I think, two or three times. No, you want a yes/no answer. He's giving you his answer, so I think we, you're not going to get a yes/no. He gave you an answer three times, I think, at this point. So, Mr. Bernstein, you look like you want to say something. Next question.
In your report, you also seem to...
Which report?
The same, same one. Page six. Draw a connection between the town's standard or design standard for the minimum number of loading spaces for various uses and the proposed number of loading docks at a warehouse. Do you recall that in your report?
Yes, I'm, I see that table here.
Now, the ordinance standards refers to loading spaces, correct? Doesn't specifically say loading docks?
Correct.
And this is, and you've identified the design, the standard or the minimum for a warehouse of this, or these sizes would be 16 loading docks, correct? Or 10 and 16, 10 for the smaller one, 16 for the larger one, correct?
I believe it's six and 10 for a total of 16.
Thank you.
Six and 10 for a total of 16.
I'm good at math.
But again, that's the minimum standard, right? There's nothing in the ordinance that precludes more than 16?
I'm presenting the ordinance in my report. I'm not making, I'm not stating anything beyond that.
Well, you're stating a little bit more than that, right? You're, you're using that minimum standard as that's what the town projected would be the number of loading docks for warehouses of this size, right?
No.
Well, let's read your report then, okay? In other words, well, let me take a step back. The maximum, hold on, let me get the exact...
Where are you reading from, please?
Same, same page, I believe. Hold on, let me see if I'm on the right report. So, you talk about if only the minimum number of loading docks, 16, was provided for the two warehouses.
Which page are you on, please?
Same, same page, same, same paragraph.
Were you on six before? Six and 10?
I'm sorry, what?
Six and 10 is 16. That's a paragraph we're on. That was on page six at the top.
No, I'm, I'm at page, page eight. You note that if only the minimum number of loading docks, 16, was provided for the two warehouses, then all the loading docks would be in use at some point throughout the day, correct?
That, that was my assumption, yes.
And in your report, or in your testimony, are you trying to say that 16 loading dock, or 16 loading spaces is what is contemplated for this warehouse of this site?
I'm trying to state that the minimum required by ordinance is 16.
But you acknowledge you could, you could have as many as you want over 16.
That's a zoning issue. I'm, I'm a traffic engineer. I can't comment on what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Well, you knew what the minimum was, right? There's no maximum, correct?
I don't know that.
You only know there's a minimum.
I, I'm referring to what the ordinance requires. The ordinance requires 16.
Now, on that same page, page eight, I believe it is, you do this mathematical calculation. Now, before, earlier, even this evening, you say you were making no assumptions as to warehouse operations. But here, you're assuming, consider the following assumptions. Truck loading docks are in use 90% of the time while the warehouse is in operation. Do you recall that?
I, I see it in my report, yes.
Now, did this article from Poland talk about warehousing docks being occupied 90% of the time?
I don't believe that it did.
And you indicated already you haven't observed live warehouse operations, correct?
Have I observed live, I...
Or studied live warehouse operations?
I did not take any classes in college about warehouse operations.
So, you're just pulling this assumption out of thin air, correct? 90%. There's, there's no, IT doesn't say assume 90% of loading docks will be occupied. I'm sorry. Please don't, please don't coach the witness. I'm going to ask him questions and he will answer. You should not be coaching him. You'll have an opportunity to cross-examine him. But isn't that correct? You're pulling this assumption out of thin air. You can't point to a study that says that.
I'm making an assumption, and I stated in the document what my assumption is.
But you have no proof that loading docks at warehouses are occupied 90% of the time 24 hours a day, do you?
I made an assumption, and I provided the calculation, so someone can check that assumption.
So, our job is you could just make up whatever facts you want, and then we have to double-check that? Is, is that how this works?
Mr. Hausmann, what's the basis for the assumption?
The basis for my assumption is that the warehouse is going to be operating at close to maximum occupancy.
And how did you come to that conclusion?
I was looking for a worst-case scenario and what the maximum number of truck trips might be.
Your witness, Mr. Giannetti.
But even still, you have no data, study, anything you could point to, that the worst-case scenario for a warehouse are that the loading docks will be occupied 90% of the time 24 hours a day, do you?
Are, is, is this a question in general, or this is a question for this specific development? For this specific development, I don't know how many hours... Well, no, you're asking me a question about 24 hours. Let me explain my assumption about 24 hours. At this point, it is not known how many hours the facility is going to operate. It might operate eight hours a day. It might operate 16 hours a day. It might operate 24 hours a day. If I was looking for the worst-case scenario, I would use 24 hours per day.
That's fine using 24 hours. That's, that's fine to assume the warehouse would be operating 24, or would be open 24 hours a day. That's part of the request. I'm saying where is your data, or study, or any information to say the loading docks would, and there's difference between a warehouse being open and the loading docks being occupied 90% of the time 24 hours a day. And not only that, getting unloaded and loaded 2.43 hours throughout that 24-hour day. So, truck comes in, gets loaded, comes out, comes from, get loaded, goes out. Truck comes in, gets loaded, go out. 24 hours a day for 90% capacity. You don't have any data to support that or study. Is that correct? Yes or no? You either have it or you don't.
Okay. That is correct.
Now, in fact, I believe you indicated you, you read the transcripts of the prior hearings or testimony of our traffic engineer and our architect?
Yes.
And in fact, you recall Mr. Tarantino cross-examining our architect on that, basically that same...
Somebody turn off whatever the beeper is, please.
I'm sorry, it's an alarm for my health. I'm trying to shut it off. It's a new way out.
That's... But as indicated, Mr. Tarantino cross-examined our architect on this very, I would say, calculation. I believe I referred to it as voodoo math. Is that correct? Do you remember that part?
I don't remember the details of that, no.
Do you remember our architect, who is also an expert in warehouse operations? All he designs are warehouses, testified that that math is actually not practical and it's not how they operate warehouses?
I object. I don't believe he testified. He testified as an operations expert. He said he was an expert in operations. He was testifying because he was an architect.
Warehouse operations. And he testified all he designs is warehouses?
He designs warehouses, but he doesn't operate warehouses.
He testified as the operations of the warehouse.
He testified to the, I agree with that.
In fact, when I tried to stop certain questioning, all the objectors kept noting, he's testifying as an expert on operations for warehouses. Does the board recall that? Do you recall that?
I agree, he testified as an expert on operations for this application.
So, you don't recall the architect's testimony that it's not practical, that math or formula for projecting traffic? Do you recall that testimony? Now, you also state on, in 07, now, again, I think you just testified earlier, you didn't make any assumptions, but we already established the one assumption you made on the 90% occupancy.
Mr. Giannetti, ask a question, please.
You also stated in your report, page seven onto eight, that the trailer parking spaces were for when the loading docks are fully occupied. Do you recall that in your report?
Yes.
And in fact, I think the exact language you said, because you were talking about potentially loading docks remaining empty throughout the day, and you said the applicant would not provide an additional 150 to 200 truck parking spaces to address anticipated conditions when all the loading docks are occupied. Where are you getting that assumption that the trailer parking spaces are for parking trailers when all the loading docks are occupied?
I don't have a source for that information. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Someone correct them?
No, no, please, stop. I'm tired of everyone trying to chirp in your ear and give you the answers to questions. I'm asking you questions. I'm not asking Mr. Tarantino questions. I'm not asking Mr. Gross questions.
Those assumptions were not part of my testimony.
It's, it's in your report.
It's in my report, and then I released a supplemental report after the applicant had testified, and I had a chance to review the applicant's testimony and also that supplemental data that they had submitted.
Correct, but didn't have...
And at that point, I recognized that the assumptions that I had made as part of my original report were really inappropriate, because as I said, there is only one traffic impact study that the board is trying to consider. They're not considering my estimate of what the traffic will be versus the applicant's estimate of what the traffic will be. They're only evaluating the applicant's estimate of what the traffic would be. So, what I wanted to focus on, to avoid this type of conversation that we're having, is to point out the flaws in the methodology of the applicant. The applicant stated that the IT recommended that they use square footage, and I pointed out that square footage and truck trips are very poorly correlated.
So, I've...
That's my testimony.
I apologize. I didn't see that in your supplemental report. And if I knew that, we probably could have saved a lot of time. And so, is it your testimony, your supplemental report, is, recognizes the flaws in your original report and is basically replacing it?
It changes the focus to the applicant's traffic impact study, because what the board needs to review here is the applicant's traffic impact study, and I'm trying to provide additional information to the board to assist them.
All right, let's, let's move to your August 27, 2024 report, which has been marked as 08. Similar as you did for loading docks in, in 07, you make a similar claim that the number of employees should be used to estimate trip generation. You say that on page six.
I think I'm quoting the IT there.
You're, you're saying, but you, you just testified that the IT makes no recommendations. Now, you're testifying that the IT recommends that you use employees to calculate traffic generation?
I believe what the IT provides is guidance on how to select an appropriate independent variable.
So, I'll, I'll read it. In your report, despite you just spending a lot of time saying the IT does not make any recommendations, you say in your report, "In addition, the IT trip generation generally recommends the use of employees as a preferred non-residential independent variable." Where does it say that in the IT?
Oh, that, that's a good question, because when the IT was first developed, what they had said, and this is in the documentation...
What documentation?
In the, in the IT trip generation manual, that the best variables to use are population and employment. And that's the federal standard. Whenever we're doing federal work for air quality or for major transportation facilities, we use population and employment to estimate traffic data. What the IT also recognized was that for individual developments, you didn't necessarily have that data available to you, which is kind of how the whole IT trip generation manual came together. But the IT, from the beginning, consistent with federal guidelines, recommended population and employment as the best variables for estimating trips.
And the first line, it says, "For the purpose of estimating trip generation, independent variable is defined as a physical measurable predictable unit describing the study site or trip generator. For example, gross floor area, employees, seats, dwelling units." So it's not just employees are talking about. They're also talking about the size of the building, correct?
Again-
I'm just saying what it says right there. What it says right there. Yes or no?
You're asking me what is the IT recommendation?
No, I'm asking-
The ITE-
No, I'm not asking that. I'm not asking that. You're talking about something else in ITE that you have not provided anywhere. I'm reading from the document you provided in your report.
Mm-hmm.
And does it not say, we're talking about the independent variable, gross floor area, employees, seats, dwelling units for projecting traffic? Yes or no? It either says it there or it doesn't?
It says it there.
Okay. So now, it's talking about also study sites, right? For traffic studies, you may study, it's not always for a new development, correct? You might be studying an intersection. You might be studying, you know, improvements being proposed on a roadway, correct? It doesn't necessarily have to do with new development all the time.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
There are certain traffic improvements. You want to put it, the DOT or the state or somebody wants to put in a traffic circle, or they want to do a signalized intersection or whatever. They'll do traffic studies based on that, correct? It's not always involving new development.
It's not always done for a developer, correct? It can be done for a public agency.
Correct. So in those instances, population, even employees, are easy to count because they're there, right? You know what's there, so you can easily use that data.
That's not true. You're not really interested in the number of persons or employees that are there today. What you're interested in is the number of persons or employees who are going to be there in the future, because you're designing the improvements not just for the existing traffic, but for the future traffic. And yes, the future population and employment is generally available, because this is a federal requirement, and that data supports a lot of different purposes, including for traffic engineering.
So if the data or information is not available for predicting the number of employees, do you agree that the ITE guidance is to use building size to determine trip generation?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
The ITE guidance is, which I think is in that page as well, regarding correlation and regarding standard deviation. That is how you select an independent variable.
So let's say we knew the tenant that's going to be in this building, and they said there is going to be 220 employees. To your own point before, you're not concerned about the employees there now. You're concerned about it in the future, just as population. Right? So-
I don't, are you talking about this development or some other development somewhere else?
I'm just saying, under your rationale, remember I talked about you would know employees, you would know population if you were doing an intersection improvement, and you said, we're not concerned about the employees there now. We're concerned about what population or employees there would be in the future. But that would be the same case here, right? Let me finish my thought. If we said, we know the tenant, it's going to be 220 employees that they have, but how reliable is that information? Tenants come and go. Tenants vacate space, tenants leases are up, and it could be a new operator with a different number of employees. It could be 400 employees, the next tenant. So how reliable is that information?
I don't understand what you're asking me.
Well, you were making the point of the application has not identified the number of employees that will be at this site. We had our operation guys project it based upon a kind of rule of thumb or industry standard of square feet, how many of that employees. But the point I'm making is, I mean, do you acknowledge tenants don't always stay at the place forever? Correct?
I'm not sure how that relates to my review of the traffic impact study. That was prepared for one specific development and provided assumptions about how that development was going to operate.
But I guess the point I'm trying to make was, even if we gave you the employee information, how reliable is that?
I can't comment on that, because you didn't give me that information.
Well, let's talk about what the ITE says, then. Let's go to that same handout you gave on page eight.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to read a paragraph. Tell me if I'm reading it correctly. It's the second to last paragraph. "The preferred independent variable," so that sounds like a suggestion, right, from ITE, "the preferred independent variable should be stable for a particular land use type and not a direct function of actual site tenants. In other words, the values and measurements attributable to an independent variable should not change dramatically with changes in building tenants. Physical site characteristics, e.g., square feet of floor area, number of dwellings, are preferable." That sounds like a recommendation to use building area over employees that are tied to tenants. Is that correct?
No.
So you disagree with the ITE saying there, then?
I-
I mean, I read it correctly, didn't I?
You read the words correctly.
Oh.
But however, in previous to that, the ITE is pretty clear-
I'm not worried about what they said several years ago. I'm asking what they said.
On the same page, folks. Can I read part of the same page, too?
You can read anything on this page.
In the middle of the page now, preferred independent variables. One appears to be a cause, quote unquote, for the variation in trip ends generated by a land use. Two is obtained through a primary measurement. Three produces a rate equation with the best fit of data. Square footage does not produce a rate or equation-
Well, I'm sorry.
-that fits the data.
Where does it say that? Where does it say square footage does not fit it? You just said you were reading from this report. Where does it say that?
When, where does it say that? If you go back-
No, this page that I'm reading from, that you relied on as the guidance and the recommendations-
This page points you to the data. Then you have to look at the data. And we go and we look at the data for square footage. Am I going toward it here or scoot? Here we go. So I'm looking now at page 17-
Of-
Of the same report.
Of your report.
And what that shows, I've circled two values. Number of trip ends is 25, and there are two different sized facilities. One is 500,000 square feet. One is 3 million square feet.
We'll get into the size and category stuff in a minute.
I'm trying to answer the question that you asked.
Well, I'm just wondering if I'm reading, I read to you what the ITE says. It sounds a lot different than what you're saying.
No, the ITE is pretty clear. You got to go back and look at the data. The ITE is a book of data. What you're reading, to me, is the guidance on how to use the data. The data is unique for each land use and each independent variable. So I go to what I'm showing on page 17, and as an example, there's a site 500,000 square feet, produces 25 truck trips. There's a site 3 million square feet that also produces 25 truck trips. I would say that's an example of the number of truck trips not being a function of square footage.
So let's go into the square footage and these different categories. Now, again, I'm going by the document you included in there, talked about the physical characteristics in the square feet and floor area. And that's the data that IT is giving you, right? On all those items you're identifying, it's the size of the building and projected truck trips, correct?
The IT provides a lot of data in the book. Yes, they provide, one of the variables that they provide is square footage.
And you take issue with our expert using land use category 150 for the warehouse, correct?
This is, well, what I take, well, I don't want to say I take issue, because it's not for me to take issue. I'm just pointing out that the Trip Generation Manual provides a recommendation on the quality of fit. They use the R squared term. The R squared term is how well the estimates fit the given data. And they also suggest comparing the standard deviation, which is the spread of data, versus the average value.
So I'm just trying to be clear. Do you or do you not take issue with the fact that our engineer used land use category 150 in projecting truck traffic?
I take issue. I don't want to, well, what is, I don't understand what take issue means.
Well, do you believe that's flawed, that he used that category instead of any of the other categories?
What I'm stating is that the ITE provides a recommendation regarding the goodness of fit, R squared, the spread of data, which is a relationship between the standard deviation and the average rate, and I'm really simplifying those two things here. And this particular graph does not meet those standards.
So, and again, I'm reading from your report, and it's interesting, because you're saying it doesn't make any recommendations, but in your report, you keep talking about it-
Which page are you on?
Recommendations. This is page four, second paragraph under page one. Sentence begins ITE. I'm going to read it. ITE recommended. "ITE recommended practice is that only sites of similar size should be used in the development of average rates and therefore the-"
I'm sorry, in the first or second report?
This is '07.
So it's the first report?
First one. "The ITE recommended practice is that only sites of similar size should be used in the development of average rates, and therefore the use of much smaller sites in warehousing, land use code 150, is inappropriate." Is that in your report?
IT recommended practice is that only sites of similar size should be used in the development of average rates. Yes.
And therefore, the use of the smaller sites in warehousing, land use code 150, is inappropriate. Isn't that what you say?
That's what I said.
Okay. Now, you say the use of much smaller sites. How are you saying the sites in land use 150 is smaller than our sites? And I'm pulling up, actually, this is, pulling up on the page, you know, we can mark these. I have these as handouts, too, as exhibits if we want to mark them. A, I believe, 11 we're up to. These are the ITE Trip Generation Manual, 11th edition.
About for the board?
I'm sorry?
Board, can I see these?
Well, I have it up on the screen, but here is an extra.
Provide a copy. You'll provide a copy to the board. I'll give it to you. You'll provide.
So you recognize this, right? This is the land use 150 category?
Yes.
So it goes from basically zero square feet all the way up to 400,000 square feet, correct?
Yes.
Now, it seems like you're saying in your report, it's not appropriate, because our site is larger than the sites being used in land use 150. Right? You say, therefore, the use of much smaller sites in warehousing, land use code 150, is inappropriate.
Right.
How big are our warehouses?
I was concerned in my initial report that I was substituting my judgment for the applicant. And after reading the applicant's testimony and looking at the supplemental information that he provided, I realized that the, what I need to do, there is only one traffic impact study that the board is considering. It's the one that you're, that the applicant provided. And what I'm trying to do is to provide some information to assist the board-
I'm not asking you to go off, no, because he's not answering the question. He's not, no, he's not answering the question. I'm asking a question.
What's the question, please?
Yeah, I'm just going to, only Mr. Gross can object at this point in time. Audience have to speak. No interjection from the audience. You'll have your time. So.
In your testimony at the last hearing, page 57 of the transcript, you were saying land use 150 suggests much lower traffic trips, and it's not true. All of that is what you were saying. Right? Do you still agree with that?
I, can, could we bring up the transcript?
Well, do you agree with that statement?
I-
I mean, I know it was a month or two ago, but your testimony should be the same. It shouldn't be changing from one meeting to another.
Is that a question or a statement?
Can you be specific about how he's being inconsistent?
I'm asking him, does he recall his statement in his last testimony? And he's saying no. And I asked, well, does he still agree with it? And he said he's not sure. So I'm trying to have him to be consistent.
Okay, so let me be consistent. There is an equation that's associated with warehouse land use 150. If you apply that equation or the average rate to the specifics of the site in the applicant's traffic impact study, I would say that the number of truck trips that that estimates is lower, is lower than would be expected, based on the characteristics of the site, the relationship between the potential uses of the site, the relationship between the number of loading docks and square footage.
So this, despite you not having any experience or expertise with warehouses, you're saying ITE information on land use 150 with regard to warehouses is not accurate, just to your gut as to how warehouses should operate?
ITE provides data, and they provide guidance on how to use the data. If you look at your 150-
I know, but do they say, take your gut as to how you think a warehouse is going to operate to project traffic?
No, they do not. But they do provide information on a recommended R squared value, which you see in the lower right, and also a recommended value, which is tough to see at the very top, between the standard deviation and the average rate.
So I guess, again, I want to come back, and I'm asking something specific, so I'd like a specific answer. In your '07 report, where I read that line, it's the same line where you're talking about the land use 150 being inappropriate, you were saying the use of the much smaller sites in that category is not appropriate. Do you know the size of our warehouses?
I believe it's in your report.
Do you know the size of our warehouses?
It's in the report.
I'm asking you, as we-
So I guess, again, I want to come back, and I'm asking something specific, so I'd like a specific answer. In your 07 report, where I read that line, it's the same line where you're talking about the land use 150 being inappropriate, you were saying the use of the much smaller sites in that category is not appropriate. Do you know the size of our warehouses?
I believe it's in your report.
Do you know the size of our warehouses?
It's in the report.
I'm asking you, as we sit here tonight, do you know the size?
I would have to look at the report.
Okay, look at your report.
168 304 and 368 995.
Are those two warehouses much smaller? Or I'm sorry, are those two warehouses much bigger than the ones identified in this category?
Um.
Or are they in line with it? The size?
You're asking me a question about engineering judgment.
I'm not asking, I'm asking specific numbers. It was your words that said it was, that the sites on this category are smaller than our sites. And we just established, ours is 160,000 square feet approximately, and 360, 360,000 approximately. Isn't that in line with the sizes on this chart? Just sizes. Yes or no? I mean, it's right there.
Yes.
The standard deviation up there says .85, correct? Or 85%?
.85, yes.
Doesn't it say, now, it talks about, you referred to the R squared, but there's also the standard deviation. Doesn't it suggest 100, doesn't ITE suggest 110% or less for standard deviation? Is indicative of a good fit with the data?
I think there are two requirements, yes, standard deviation and R squared.
I'm just talking about standard deviation right now.
Did he answer it?
I'm asking about standard deviation, he keeps talking about everything else. I'm asking him about standard deviation.
Standard deviation, yes.
Now, in your 07, this is your first traffic report, you have a table of different land use categories, correct? Table one.
Yes.
Now, you don't have the numbers there, but the standard is land use 150. Do you know what the transload land use code is?
I don't offhand.
Or the short-term storage?
I do not.
And any of them there, do you know what the land use categories are?
I don't know what the land use numbers are.
Did you take this information from the 11th Edition ITE Trip Generation Handbook or Manual?
No, I took it from the High Cubed Warehouse Vehicle Trip Generation Analysis, prepared by IT 2016.
2016, so when they issue a 11th Edition in 2021, do you think they took that into consideration when they came up with their traffic projections?
The IT doesn't produce traffic projections, as I understand the word to me.
Traffic data.
No, because the IT is a book of data. They don't make any recommendations as far as the use of a specific independent variable.
Funny, he keeps saying they don't make any recommendations, but in your report, all you talk about is what the IT recommends. So let's look.
Is that a question? Is that a question?
No, that's a point.
Okay, can I make a point too?
I'll ask you the question, redirect, you can make all the points you want.
Okay, fair enough.
You also make the statement in the report, by using land use 150 and based upon this 2016 data, right, 2016 data, the 150 category actually produces less truck traffic than these other categories. Is that basically what you were saying in your report and even what you testified to at the last meeting?
Um, I, oh.
Don't, please don't point.
I see.
Please stop coaching the witness.
Just show him where the report you're referring to, that's all.
Yeah, I think the standard, I guess, is the 150.
Yeah, the standard.
And then the proposed site, the last line, yes. So that's the rate.
And you said the standard warehouses is inappropriate land use 150 for the proposed development, as it greatly underestimates the anticipated truck trip generation. Right, so you were looking at, you took this data, and you took it as what it projects for truck traffic. And you gave the opinion in your report, it's too low, it's actually higher based upon the other categories. Correct? Is that generally what you said right there?
I did give my opinions as far as the first report.
So, yeah, that's what it says. Okay, so this is, what I've handed out, we've marked as A11, are, actually, and you have this, page five of your 07 report, has the 11th Edition Land Use 150, right? It's the same, I'm showing the same thing. Yours just has red circles on it.
Okay.
All right, so, and it's the same, projects truck traffic at an average rate of .6 per 1,000 square feet, correct?
Correct.
And, and that's what our traffic engineer used in his projection, correct?
Not true. Your traffic engineer did not estimate the number of truck trips on a weekday. This is a graph for a weekday. So what you're saying is not true.
Okay. But he used a land use 150 category for projecting traffic.
You asked me a question.
I'm asking, I'm rephrasing it.
Well, you're asking me about this graph.
What's your question, please?
Your traffic engineer never used this graph. So you're asking me about a graph that your traffic engineer never used.
But he did say, using the land use 150 category, as did the Penoni Review Letter, that using that .6 per 1,000 square feet, it produces 161 trucks and 322 trips.
Okay.
So, and you're saying that grossly underestimates it. So let's go to the next category, transload, short term. This is land use category 154, correct? And you have that highlighted in your chart. I'm sorry, your table one. So the IT, or isn't it true, the 2021 11th Edition IT manual, five years after whatever analysis you were referring to, states truck trip generation per 1,000 square feet, average rate .22 truck rate, or trips per 1,000 square feet, correct?
That's the number, yes, average rate .22.
Correct, and that's less than the .6 we used for 150, land use 150.
You're asking me if the number .22 is less than the number 0.6?
Yes, that's, yes.
I believe that is true.
I think we can agree on that one. So let's look at, now, you have fulfillment center, I'm sorry, you have cold storage, we'll skip that one for a second. You have fulfillment center slash distribution center. But there are, on the table one, there are two different types of fulfillment center and distribution center, correct?
You're talking about?
I'm asking, I'm asking if you know, on the land use categories, that they actually separate out, not needing to look at the exhibit, I'm just asking, do you know?
I did not recall that offhand, no.
Now, do you see in this chart, they have a land use category 155 non-sort, and then, or distribution center non-sort, and then 155 distribution center or fulfillment center sort? Do you know the difference between the two?
I don't offhand.
Do you recall the testimony of the architect that the sort means that, there's two different types of fulfillment centers, one where it's automated, and machines are sorting everything out, and that's considered non-sort, and then there's sort where humans or people are sorting everything out. Do you recall that testimony?
I, I don't.
Okay, so let's look at the first one, I think it's.
The 155?
Yes, I just want to make sure. Yeah, 155 non-sort.
This is an interesting graph, because it says fitted curve equation not given, because for this particular land use, I mean, and there's no R squared, indicating that there's no relationship between the number of truck trips and square footage.
True, we'll get to that in a second. But in this category has, again, truck, because you used it in your first report, right? You identified, you tried to say our use of 150 would project less trucks, because look at all the numbers they have here, they actually produce more trucks, right? So you used it, you relied upon it.
I did not, I did not produce a traffic impact study. There's only one traffic impact study that we're considering here, and that one used land use 150.
You can't go back and forth. Your report says, closer look at the ITE trip generation further reveals how the average truck trip generation rate for standard warehouses is inappropriate for the proposed development and greatly underestimates the truck trip generation. So you relied on those other uses, right? You didn't say, we can't use any of this stuff because it's not reliable. You relied upon it to say, our projections were going to be too low. Isn't that true? Isn't that what your report says? It's, I mean, it is, I understand.
There's different warehouse uses that produce different numbers of trucks, yes.
And you use this data to form your opinion that we were grossly underestimating it. But now, let's look at the sort fulfillment center. They projected per 1,000 square feet, it's actually .23 trucks per 1,000 square feet. Isn't that what that says right up there?
Next to the range of rates, which goes from 507 to .89.
No, I'm not talking about the range of rates, right? You didn't, you didn't talk about that, and when you said it was, ours was going to be, ours was projected to be too low, you were fine using this when you were saying these numbers produce higher. But now, five years later, where they updated their numbers, our rate using 150 is actually higher than this one, right? So if we used 155 instead of 150, it would have been a lower truck trip generation.
If you would have used 155 instead of 150, I would have had the same comment that the R, that, well, that's the issue here.
Yes, but timeout.
That the graph does, it shows that there's no relationship between the number of truck trips and the gross floor area.
But again, you didn't say that in 07. When the number you thought was higher, or would result in higher truck trips, you were happy to point to it and say, look, that land use category produces way more trucks than our 150 we use, when in fact, it produces less. So our traffic engineer was in fact conservative when he used the 150 category, because it produces the most truck trips out of any of these uses.
It's not, well, what's the question in that? Is it the most conservative? That's the question?
Out of, out of all the other uses?
It's inappropriate.
I'm saying it's most conservative.
But you're choosing among values that are inappropriate.
Ah, but you didn't say that when, when you thought they projected more traffic, you didn't say that.
I said it in my test, I said it in my testimony.
Well, let's look at also the sort, right, fulfillment center sort. That average rate per 1,000 square feet is .19 truck trips per 1,000 square feet, right? Land use 150 is .6, 150 is higher than that, right? It's a yes or no? I mean, it's .6 for .19, it's yes or no?
You're quoting two numbers out of context.
I'm not.
One is bigger than the other.
You were fine using it in your 07 report. Let's look now parcel hub. That actually, parcel hubs can produce, you know, maybe you know, maybe you don't know, parcel hubs, is that referring to a FedEx, or like a UPS, or DHS, you know, parcel deliveries?
I think that's my understanding.
And what does it have here for truck trip generation 1,000, 1,000 square feet? A .58, just slightly lower than ours, but still ours projects higher, correct? Using 150.
I.
Yes, yes or no?
The number .6 is greater than the number .58, yes.
Now, separately though, do you recall, or I think, I can't, I believe it was our traffic engineer, and I stated, we stated, this is not going to be a parcel hub center. We are okay with that being as part of any approval, that this is not going to be a parcel hub center. So do you recall that? Yes or no?
I don't recall that.
Can Mr. Janetti have any more, much more time, because I'm looking for a break here.
Can I finish this land use category, and then we can take, it's, I'll wait for the court reporter?
Mm-hmm.
Just two more, and hopefully he can, will acknowledge. So parcel hub, I guess we established, we're not going to be that, but even still, you agree, our use of land use 150 at .6 trips per 1,000 square feet is higher than the .58 for land use 156?
I agree again, that the number .6 is greater than the number .58.
And then the last one is cold storage warehouse, and per 1,000 square feet, that's .75. So in fact, a cold storage, which are designed differently, that has, that does have a slightly higher truck trip per, trip generation per 1,000 square feet than the 150.
Yes, and interestingly, for that land use, the R squared is satisfactory, as well as the relationship between the standard deviation and the average.
So again, you use those categories, well, I guess I don't need to make the point, it speaks for itself. We can take a break.
Okay. All right, looks like, we need about 10, or, okay. So we'll reconvene, you know what, at 8:50. Yep, we'll start sharp at 8:50. Okay, we're back in session?
Mr. Hausman, on 08, which is your second traffic report, on page. Mr. Hausman, on 08, which is your second traffic report, on page 10, you include an aerial photo of an Amazon fulfillment center at 1910 East Central Avenue, San Bernardino, California. It just wasn't clear to me, from your report, why you were referencing that, or what it was used for. Do you recall that?
Sure. The IT has established standards on how to conduct a traffic count. New Jersey DOT has standards as well. So when you conduct a traffic count, if there are multiple driveways, you count the driveways individually, and you report the volume at each.
So you weren't including that to compare our proposed warehouses to this Amazon fulfillment center?
Including it to show what a proper traffic count looks like.
I'm asking specifically. I'm asking specifically, yes or no, were you including this to somehow indicate what we are proposing is similar to that?
No.
So going back to, sorry bouncing back and forth between your reports, '07, page four, second paragraph towards the end, the paragraph that starts with, that starts with the word figure one, towards the end. And again, keep testifying, IT doesn't recommend, but the last line, you, or second to last line, you state, "Instead, the recommended practice," well, let me take a step back. The sentence before that, you say, "The IT recommended practice is that only sites a similar size should be used in the development of average rates and therefore the use of the much smaller sites in warehousing, land use code 150 is inappropriate." Then you state, "Instead, the recommended practice is that a separate trip generation study should be conducted of similar facilities to the proposed development." Is that where your report says?
Yes.
So now again, we just established previously the land use 150 code used by our traffic engineer projects, or is most conservative because it projects the highest amount of truck traffic of all the land use categories for warehouses except for the cold storage. Now despite that-
Are you making a statement or are you asking a question?
No, I'm getting to the question right here. Despite that, you're aware that our traffic engineer did exactly what you said should be done for studying specific sites of specific uses of similar size? Didn't he do that? You recall, you've seen A-10, which is up on the, on the screen?
You're asking me if the applicant produced A-10? That's my understanding, this was produced by the applicant.
And as you understand that this is a study of other existing warehouses of similar sizes?
Um, I-
Similar, you know, not exactly the same size.
This is what the applicant produced, I accepted it-
Sure.
-as what the applicant produced. I didn't review it for accuracy.
Accuracy as to what? He's, he's saying these are the counts that he did. Are you insinuating he put different traffic count information?
There's a process that we go through to review a traffic count. The applicant didn't provide that information in order to review the result, to summarize results that he had here.
You're referring to the vacancy question, correct?
No, I'm referring to, you know, there are standards for how a traffic count is conducted. Traffic volumes are counted every 15 minutes, individual driveways are labeled frequently or typically there's a picture so that you know you have the site, if someone wants to review where the count was done, they can ensure that the count was done at the correct location. I did not do this for this A-10, I just accepted this data.
Okay. So, and you can see it has a different color coding of, I know it's hard to see. There's different colors there, green, blue, and I guess beige. And he indicates where, the green is where the IT for a warehouse of that size actually projected a higher truck track count than it actually was. And the blue is when the IT, whoops, the IT and count had essentially equal projections. And then the beige is when these counts were actually higher than IT. Is that correct? Is that what that code says?
You're asking me what the words are?
Yes.
You just read what the words are. Yes, you read those words.
And it was his testimony based upon that chart, given all the green, then in fact, most of the warehouses that they did this traffic, these traffic counts out, had less truck traffic than what the IT projected for a warehouse of that size. You recall that being his testimony and what this exhibit, he was using it for?
I'm not sure.
I'm not saying you have to agree with it, I'm just saying you recall that being his testimony.
You're asking me if your applicant provided testimony. I think you can just state that.
Well, you said you read the transcripts, I'm curious if you recall that part of his testimony? Yes or no?
I recall some of it, yes.
Now, at the last meeting or hearing, you raised issues with, or concerns that it wasn't indicated whether his analysis, whether sites were fully occupied or not. Wasn't that your testimony at the last meeting?
I think my testimony was that the IT recommendation for conducting these kinds of counts is to include the occupancy of the site. And I believe the applicant also implied, if not stated, that the occupancy of the site was an important piece of information because he was asked by the public and he said, "To the best of his knowledge, each of these sites was 100% occupied." I'm paraphrasing.
Yes, and at the last meeting, you talked about websites, you looked at, which you were kind of calling into question whether the sites were fully occupied, correct? Like real estate listing websites?
I, I expressed concerns whether the sites were indeed 100% occupied because if the applicant, my assumption was that if the applicant had information that they were 100% occupied, he should have provided that to the board and he should have answered that question.
Well, he testified to, he testified to that.
He didn't, he testified to the best of his knowledge they were. He provided no information to back up that testimony and he didn't answer the question, yes, they were.
So in '08 of your report-
Is that the second report?
Yes, that is the second report. Actually, I'm sorry, at the last meeting, you specifically referred to 111 Cokesbury Road, Lebanon, New Jersey, and 900 Federal Boulevard Carteret to try and raise questions of whether those sites were fully occupied. Isn't that true?
Um-
I can go back to the transcript if I need to.
I did mention those two sites, yes.
Okay.
And there was no proof provided by the applicant that those two sites were 100% occupied. And there was no proof provided by the applicant that each driveway at those sites was counted individually, although that is the IT standard for how you conduct a traffic count.
So since that time, are you aware of the letter Mr. Gross sent to this board on October 24th addressing 111 Cokesbury Road and 900 Federal Boulevard? Are you, have you seen that letter?
Um, yes.
Okay. Now in it, uh, let me see here. He notes that your report from August 2024, '08, indicated, I guess I'll start first with 900 Federal Boulevard, was 27% vacant based upon a LoopNet listing that you found online. Isn't that what his letter did and isn't that what your report said?
Yes.
Now it seems they, you have now acknowledged that the site was fully occupied and that there's a Virginia Dare Extract Company that signed a 15-year lease in 2017. And the letter acknowledges that at least 900 Federal Boulevard was 100% leased.
Yes.
But with 111 Cokesbury Road, Lebanon, you states one can conclude is substantially vacant and is relying upon a Cushman Wakefield listing.
He doesn't state, Mr. Gross states that as a supplemental to his report.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm referring to, the letter says.
He had stated it.
I'm sorry. The, the letter is referencing, from Mr. Gross, that one can conclude 111 Cokesbury Road is substantially vacant based upon a Cushman Wakefield listing. Do you, are you aware of that or were you, you consulted Mr. Gross on that? Did you, the Cushman Wakefield link provided, it takes you to the, the actual Cushman Wakefield listing, correct? Did you click on that?
I think that's a question for you, Scott.
Is that a question for me?
Oh, no, it was for Mr. Hausman. Whether he was involved or not, I don't know.
I, I'll answer. Mr. Hausman provided a link, the source was questioned. I used his link and I got the same exact result that he provided in his August report in October and I looked at it again today and it's still the same, 42.8% vacant.
Did you go on the website? Does it actually say vacant or does it say available?
Available.
Available doesn't necessarily mean vacant though, correct? You could have a lease ending and you could be subleasing, there's always different ways, doesn't necessarily mean the space is empty, correct?
That sounds like a statement, not a question.
No, I'm saying, I, I made a statement and I'm asking, correct? Do you agree with that?
I'm not a real state, I'm not a real state professional, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I think I would rely on the applicant providing some proof if you're claiming that the space is actually occupied.
Sure.
Instead of just stating it with absolutely no proof that that is the case. And actually for all of these sites, there's no proof provided that any of them are 100% occupied.
Well, again, you say there's no proof, he testified that to the best of his knowledge they were fully occupied.
No, he-
What, what, that's what his testimony was. So don't say there was no proof. You just want all the information in the world as to whether or not they're occupied. I'm responding to his comment.
You're pontificating.
Could we cut out from the col, on the colloquy and just ask questions?
So I'd like to mark this next exhibit.
A-12.
A-12. I'm going to show you a copy of an email. Well, I guess the listing identified Chuck Fern as a listing broker. Do you recall seeing that?
I don't.
Okay. I'm going to hand you, I'll hand out to the board as well, an email from Mr. Fern.
Are we producing Mr. Fern?
You're asking?
No, you're, you're, you are providing the board with this email, which I assume is to prove or disprove the statements of Mr. Gross and/or prove the testimony of Mr. Dean.
Well, I'm sorry, did, did they have to bring Mr. Fern to say that the space is vacant or not occupied?
No, I'm, no, you, let's go back.
This is, this is to corroborate what Mr. Dean has already testified to. And there's an email to Mr. Dean and I'll read it and you can tell me whether or not he has to actually come and testify to it.
I'm going to indicate-
I'm, I'm, I'm going to get in there because profession I'm in, this is not an objective evidence because anyone can produce an, an email like this. So for this to be, you would need Mr. Fern to come in here to corroborate that he is actually the author of this document.
An email from chuckfern@cushwake.com and Gary Dean, well, when Gary Dean comes back in, he can corroborate it.
He's Mr. Charles Fern? Anyone could produce this, I could produce this as a word. This could be produced on a word document. You want him in here? You can bring him in here if you want to submit this.
No, I'm not bringing him in. Mr. Dean will corroborate that this email came from Chuck Fern and it specifically says it was fully occupied, 100% occupied, and that this listing is only six months old.
You can get Mr. Chuck Fern to sign and date this. This is not, this is not objective evidence. In my profession, I'd be laughing.
It's what Mr. Dean relied upon.
We're going to market-
We're going to market A-12, but with no testimony behind it.
All right, so just so we're clear with all their other experts, when they refer to something, you know, a study that they read, they got to bring that expert in to testify to it?
Objection.
It's good for Goose, it's good for the Ganner.
This is not your time.
Sorry.
It's okay. I understand, yeah, the angst, but no.
That's all.
There you go.
The reference to all the objectives, it's only been a couple of broad actors.
I meant the objector witnesses, I meant the objector witnesses, objector witnesses. Going back to your '08. If I could find, I'm sorry, that's just- This is '08. Hmm, page eight. Well, that wasn't, I guess this was introduced into evidence. I mean, do, do we have someone from the IT come and say that this is a valid document?
I object, you're starting to be ridiculous with your questions, I object.
You really want to go down that road because your traffic expert came in and testified, basically his entire testimony is based on IT numbers and he didn't come in with anybody supporting it from IT. The issue for this situation, Mr. Dean came in and testified that a bunch of warehouses were all occupied or partially occupied or mostly occupied. Mr. Hausman has indicated that that's not his understanding. Mr. Gross, because we asked for the backup to it, has provided a backup. If you would like to bring Mr. Dean in on rebuttal and indicate that he has spoken to Mr. Fern or whatever it is and deal with the issue at that point, maybe Mr. Dean's testimony will suffice. But you started the issue, you're going to either have to finish it or leave it where it is. But if you're going to go down the road where everybody's got to produce the backup for everybody else's study, we will be here well into the next century.
Yes.
And I don't think that's what your client wants, I don't think that's what the- And I don't think that's what your client wants. I don't think that's what the board wants. I don't think that's what anybody wants. So let us try and move this along.
Sure, I guess. Page 12 of your report includes an aerial photo of 1-1 Cokesbury Road. You know, and it says Cokesbury Road showing empty parking lot and vacant space. But again, you don't have any proof that the space was vacant. Correct?
I do not have any proof that the space was vacant on the day when the space was counted.
You got to get closer to the.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't have any information about the occupancy on the day of the count. No.
That's all we have for cross-examination.
Redirect. Mr. Hausman, does the ITE recommend that you flatly use a data point such as floor area, number of employees, or similar to estimate trip generation? Or should you do something else with this data?
Well, the ITE there, they provide guidance regarding the accuracy of the data that they provide and whether it should be used. So it's a statistical analysis. They look at R squared and the standard deviation, which is what is the variability among the data? Because that's a good indication about whether there's a correlation and the IT also talks about causation, a relationship between the number of trips and the independent variable. So it depends on the land use. You know, I think I had shown in the report, I forget offhand the particular land use where the use of square footage is absolutely appropriate. The R squared was like point nine or something. But for warehouse, the R squared was below what the ITE recommends.
Which land use did the applicant use in their study?
They used.
You got to speak up, Mr. Gross.
Which land use did the applicant use in their study?
The applicant used warehouse land use 150. And that was the only, because it was the one that was in the applicant's report, it's the only one that I went back to look at the R squared and the standard deviation.
So using that assumption on using land use 150 and having a poor R squared or a fit, should that be used then in generating truck trips according to ITE standards?
Using square footage.
Yes.
Right. That's an indication that that is a poor choice of an independent variable to use.
Did the applicant use any other data besides floor area to estimate trip data?
They only used floor area.
Did you recommend a land use or an independent variable to use for predicting truck trips?
Ultimately, I did not because typically, you know, my role when I do these reviews is I am working for a government agency. And what they want to know is what improvements are, what transportation improvements are going to be required. So when I am doing that review, I need to, if I have a disagreement on the land use or the independent variable, I need to select my own in order to complete that analysis. That's not the case here. There's only one traffic impact study. The applicant prepared it. He used land use 150, independent variable square footage, and that was the one that I analyzed.
Whose responsibility is it to choose a variable that is fitting to predict?
That's part of the responsibility of the applicant as far as the preparation of the traffic impact study.
During the architect who testified for operations, he indicated that it would take one hour to load a trip and one hour to unload a trip for a total of two hours per truck trips. Mr. Tarantino went through some math and we came up with 87 number of bays and two hours per truck and estimated something like 1,044 truck trips per day. Using that two-hour-per-truck assumption, how does that compare to any calculations that you performed?
Yeah, that the applicant had mentioned the two-hour time. I had found that one report that was a bit higher, 2.43, which means that you would have less trucks per day than the two-hour dumper. You know, the the container operation is pretty standard because containers are shipped all around the world. So the the truck operation should be similar in different places.
I'm going to object. It's pure speculation. He's admitted he's not an expert in warehouses or their operations, hasn't studied it. So I don't know how he's making these assumptions as to how they work around the world.
Is your assumption that, how many hours did you use to estimate to load and unload a truck?
Well, based on the report, 2.43, I'm just making the statement that container size, because trade is international, container sizes are standard around the world. That's the only statement I want to make with regard to that.
Would you say that your assumption is more or less, would generate more or less truck trips than what the architect would? Based on the time to load and unload?
Larger time to unload would translate to fewer, you know, lower capacity and therefore fewer trips.
Going to Mr. Dean's collection of warehouse data and it submitted as a report and testified to it. Do you feel that Mr. Dean adequately described his methodology? That's in accordance with standard practice for a traffic study?
Well, as I mentioned, because he didn't provide the, I'll call them the raw traffic counts, the backup information, it was not possible to check that data. However, this is the data that was provided. It was accepted by the board. So what I did was I analyzed the data as it was provided to me. And what it showed with these sites was that there was a poor correlation between the number of truck trips and square footage.
If the vacancy figures were unclear for this report, would that affect the resultant in terms of whether it's a good fit using floor area to predict truck trips?
Well, you know, occupancy is definitely a factor. You know, IT talks about it as a factor. The applicant talked about it as well because that's why they needed to indicate that they were 100% occupied. You know, that we're working with the data that was provided. The applicant provides they were 100% occupied. Okay. I did the analysis based on that assumption. The analysis to show that there was a poor correlation between the number of truck trips and the square footage for the sites that were counted.
I'm ready to wrap up. I'll just leave a quick open question. Is there anything that we felt was unclear in your answers to Mr. Giannetti before that you would like to clarify? Or are you good?
I think that I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No redirect. Or re-cross, sorry.
Any questions from board members or board professionals as to the witness's testimony? Sorry, Mr. May, you?
Thank you. I was beginning to feel like you guys forgot.
You got to move the. Come on.
Mr. Hausman, maybe you can help me understand. We were just talking about a color chart that the applicant submitted comparing about a dozen other warehouses. Can you clarify this chart? Seems to be talking about AM and PM peak hour trips. So it's not discussing total daily truck trips. Is that correct?
That's, that's, as I recall, that's correct. The chart just shows morning and evening peak hour trips, which was the same as the applicant's first report, which also didn't include any mention of daily trips.
So this chart's not calculating total daily trips, correct?
It didn't appear that total daily trips were calculated, were counted, I should say.
And we've had a lot of discussion. We've heard about different independent variables. This chart appears to only provide one variable and that's the building square footage, correct?
Correct.
So this chart does not even provide data on how many loading docks each warehouse has, correct?
Correct.
This chart does not show any data on how many truck parking spaces there are, correct?
That's correct as well.
If you were an engineer and you desired to utilize the ITE data, in your opinion, would it be important to utilize the proper use classification? And as an example, if we were analyzing a food establishment, in your opinion, would there be a difference between traffic for, let's say, a fine dining establishment versus a fast food establishment?
Absolutely. And those are two different land uses.
And yet each.
In the IT.
And each of them could generally be considered food establishment.
Correct. Correct. They're both restaurants, but within the restaurant category, there's a number of different subcategories.
And so getting that subcategory correct, in your opinion, is critical if you're going to try to use metrics associated such as square footage.
Correct, yes.
So can I assume similarly, if we're going to call this proposed facility a warehouse, it's critical to understand the proper use of that warehouse, correct?
It would certainly be beneficial to know the use of the warehouse. However, for this application, as I understood it, the details of the operation are not known at this point. They weren't included in the report.
And so, you know, regardless of what an applicant may title the use of the warehouse, in your opinion, would it be important to look at the parameters associated with the use such as number of loading docks?
The number of loading docks can give a clue as far as the potential uses of the site.
And I believe, and we've talked about this tonight, your letter dated October 6, 2022, you have a table, one titled ITE Trip Generation Rates. Mr. Giannetti's already discussed this and asked you some questions about the different rates. And this chart includes a list of different types of general warehouse types. It also includes some really important ratios. And one of them is loading dock to square foot ratio, correct?
Correct, yes.
And I believe in your chart, in your testimony, a standard or what we're trying to call warehouse 150 has generally 20,000 square feet of space for each loading dock, correct? I'm reading your, this is on page four. It's your table one.
Which report, first or second?
It's the first report.
I see that ratio.
So I'm looking.
And I have to.
I'm looking at.
Let me finish the answer.
I'm looking at that first ratio. I I'm not positive the source of that information.
Well, that column is identifying square footage per loading dock.
Right. The the purpose of the study that the IT did was to see if they, I mean, they recognized that when you use the warehouse single land use across different types of warehouses, they were getting a poor fit when they were using the square footage. So what they wanted to do was to see if they could do better by identifying different warehouse subtypes, which is similar for, you know, it's been done for many land uses over the years. So one of the things that they were looking at was the ratio of loading dock to square footage for the different warehouse, I'll call them subtypes. And they also had information in that report about the relationship between the amount of truck parking and the number of loading docks.
Well, in your opinion, would a site be considered more intensive the lower the building square footage versus loading dock? Or I could rephrase that, the more loading docks per square footage. In your opinion, would that indicate a more intensive use?
It would indicate the potential for a more intensive use. And because, and if you, I would suggest that if you don't know the specifics of the operation, you need to take that into account, the more intense use.
And a potentially more intensive use could produce more daily traffic, correct?
Correct.
And if I take the applicant's numbers, I understand it's approximately 537,000 square feet of warehouse and 87 loading docks. So you can check my math, but that works out for me to be about 6,175 square feet of warehouse space per dock. According to your chart, that puts it in a fairly high intensity use. Would you agree?
Well, it's a facility that could be used based on that one dimension, that one factor for, you know, any type of warehouse operation. Could be a low intensity use, could be a higher intensity use.
But with that high amount of docks, the opportunity to produce more truck traffic exists.
There's an opportunity for a more intense operation.
Okay. And if we look at another parameter you have in that same table, as I understand, the applicant's proposing 137 trailer parking spaces, which produces approximately 1.6 parking spaces per loading dock. Again, that puts you on the high end of your chart. Would that, in your opinion, indicate higher intensity use?
It would indicate the potential for having a higher intensity use at the site, yes.
So if we were going to rely on an applicant's traffic, like the applicant calls it, a trip generation comparison chart, wouldn't it be appropriate for the applicant's traffic engineer to utilize warehouses that demonstrate the similar parameters as far as loading dock ratio and truck parking ratio? dock ratio and truck parking ratios?
I would suggest that those two variables, if you're looking for similar operations, would be, you know, as critical as square footage. You know, one of the things which I noticed when you look at warehouse listings, that they always list the square footage, because that's critical for anybody who's looking at the space, they also list the number of loading docks and the amount of truck parking, because all three of those variables are important to anyone who would occupy the space.
So according to your chart, there's certainly a range of anticipated truck trips per day, per thousand square feet of warehouse space, and in your opinion, then, if the intensity of this-
Wait, I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Sure. So according to your Table 1 chart, there's a range of daily trip generation rates per thousand square feet. And if we're underestimating, or if we're underclassifying the anticipated use of this warehouse, in your opinion, could there be greater daily truck trips than anticipated?
Well, I would not draw that conclusion solely based on this table. I would look at this and, okay, now let's go to the individual data, and let's look if the use of square footage is appropriate for estimating the number of truck trips. Because if the use of square footage is not an appropriate independent variable, then you can't draw any conclusions from the data that's presented here.
So for the board's benefit, then, if you're in the public, if you're saying, "We're trying to estimate the truck trips anticipated for this site," are you saying that the data hasn't been provided by the applicant to adequately estimate that?
What I am saying is that the selection of the land use and the independent variable, the number of trips is poorly correlated for that land use, for that independent variable, and that makes it a poor choice to estimate the number of truck trips.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss?
I have nothing at, I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, board members.
I have a couple, Chairman. So obviously, the Holy Grail, this whole conversation is the ITE Bible. How often is that updated? Is it constantly being evolved? Is it every year, every 10 years randomly?
I think it's close to every year, but it's not a new set of data that's being collected. I mean, it's just additional data-
Right.
You know, on top of the data that's already there.
So, and the reason I ask you, you're referencing reports back to 2016, right? Or 2020, so the data that's, if it's not out of date, it stays as it is till they find a new reason to update it. That's kind of what I'm asking.
It's, it's not, you know, they'll, they'll use any valid data that they get. So there's requirements on what constitutes a valid traffic count. If the traffic count is valid, then they'll include that data, and it doesn't matter whether they had two warehouse sites or 102 warehouse sites. You know, any valid data is added to the database.
Okay. Is there any data or determination as to proximity of a, of a site, like location, traffic distances from portals, hubs, or anything like that?
Well, the recommendation from the IT is that if your hypothesis, if you will, that that is significant factor, what the IT recommends, to do something similar to what the applicant did, to identify 10 existing sites that meet those criteria, and do a traffic count at those sites, and see how it compares to, you know, the standard database that IT has collected for a wide variety of sites.
All right, and my last question is, as in preparing a traffic impact study, in your opinion, is it best practice to create multiple scenarios to get the most accurate count, meaning different variables and meeting that R squared and deviation factor to meet that?
I, you don't need to look at every independent variable and select the best one. You need to find an independent variable that meets the IT standards. And if, and if it doesn't meet the IT standards for correlation and causation, then you shouldn't use that.
Okay. So I-
Any other members? Motion open to public? No?
Examination by the objectors, the other objectors, if they have any, then the public.
Okay. Okay, in order. Is she okay, none? Mr. Tarantino?
No questions. No questions.
Okay, now we can motion open to public.
So moved.
Home favor? Aye. Okay, we know. Come on up, you're allowed to question the witness.
On his test-
Testimony for the past couple of meetings, I guess.
Bill Martin, 237 Hillsborough Road. In the 1221-21 Dolan Dean Traffic Report. All right. In the 1221-21 Dolan Dean Traffic Report, they stated, quote, "The bypass is intended to divert traffic, to divert through traffic from US 206, thus reducing the traffic volumes traveling through the signalized intersection with Homestead Road." In your opinion, if this application was approved, wouldn't this increase traffic flow at this intersection and thus violate the intended purpose of the US 206 bypass?
I'm going to object, as beyond the scope of his testimony.
Okay. The Dolan Dean report, traffic report was completed prior to the weight restriction on Willow Road, correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
All right, in the December 2023 Planning Board Meeting, Comedienne Ciccarelli asked Mr. Dean, quote, "You mentioned the prohibition of trucks on Willow Road. Would that change the distribution of trucks or traffic in the current study?" End quote. Mr. Dean's response was, "No, we assigned our trips to Route 206." On page 11 of your October 6, 2022 report, you said diverting 20% of truck traffic to travel east on Homestead Road to Willow Road, as represented in Appendix Figure 4, that's the Dolan Dean Report, is not a responsible mitigation from the impacts that the additional truck traffic would have caused at the signalized intersection. Doesn't this mean that truck traffic would be going to Willow Road?
As I understood the Dolan and Dean volume figures, it was showing traffic going to Willow Road. Truck, truck traffic going to Willow Road, that, that's an issue of trip distribution. I didn't really focus on that, because if there are issues with trip generation that are significant in the number of trucks, you need to resolve that first before you can determine what the impacts would be of changing the routes for the trucks away from Willow Road and toward 206.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? And just a reminder, you know, we'll be ending in about 15 minutes, so if anyone wants to ask questions, please start lining up, so we have an idea.
Merrill Bisberg for Hickory Hill Road. My question is simply, if the trailer parking, which is extensive with this project, I think 137 spaces, if the trailer parking was doing train shipment, in other words, trucks are coming in and dropping off a trailer, another one is being picked up, isn't that a complete net increase to the calculation? Like, don't you have to include more than docks?
Well, that's, you know, the number of truck parking spaces, you know, may be a significant factor in estimating truck trip generation. You know, there's a statistical analysis that could be done in order to determine if that's the case. You know, if, as part of the data that Dolan and Dean collected, if they had collected both the number of loading docks and the number of truck parking spaces, then it would have been possible to do a statistical analysis to see whether those variables were significant.
Right.
But, you know, that's, that's a hypothesis. You need to do the analysis to determine if that's the case or not.
And their analysis did not include, they included square footage docks, but not-
They included square footage only.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? And some motion to close?
So moved.
Home favor? Aye. Okay.
I have one related, I have one separate topic I'd like to broach this, but this is closed with Mr. Hausman. It's become evident during the hearings that we would, we want to supplement our testimony, there's several issues related to commercial vehicle traffic and safety that have not been addressed by the applicant. We intend to bring one additional expert witness to a future Planning Board Meeting to address warehouse-related truck traffic, commercial vehicle and truck safety, and real world impacts of warehouse operations on townships, including the impact of this application if it were to be approved on Hillsborough. Our expert witness is a resident and a 20-year member of law enforcement. They have experience through that 20 years with commercial truck traffic, safety, and inspections, and truck traffic and traffic enforcement in New Jersey. They have relevant certifications from the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission, the New Jersey DOT, and the US DOT. They also have working knowledge of state and federal statutes and regulations in the area of commercial vehicle operation, safety, and associated enforcement. They also have additional knowledge of this application and can speak to the real world impacts of that on Hillsborough.
Mr. Gross, let me, I hopefully circumvent Mr. Giannetti. You planning on providing a report?
We will provide a written report 10 days prior. If it pleases the board, we can also-
No, you're going to provide a report, assume, I'll leave Mr. Giannetti's objection for the moment. If we get past that and the board is interested, we want a resume from the individual as to his expertise in the testimony you plan on providing, as well as a full-blown report as to what that expertise turns into for purposes of this board to make an informed decision as it relates to the pieces you're proposing as an expert. Mr. Giannetti?
Aside from what you just indicated would have to be provided, I'm going to object to it as, A, sounds like going to be, in some instances, speculation, but B, that information might be good for the Township Committee when they consider zoning ordinances, but it's not relevant when we're dealing with the use that, per this application, is permitted for this zone.
Mr. Gross, based on Mr. Giannetti's comment, as well as mine, the requirements are, and we're going to, I assume at some point, determine when the next board meeting is going to be for this application, you're going to need to get that in. At that point, it's up to Mr. Giannetti to make his comments regarding the report provided, forget the testimony, and the board will then hear argument on whether or not it will allow your expert to testify, and/or the report to be entered as part of the testimony.
We appreciate that opportunity, but we believe there is testimony that the board should hear to make an informed decision.
That you, whether you believe it, the answer is, and Mr. Giannetti is correct in the sense, it has got to be focused, at least in large measure, on the application before this board. The board is not going to get involved in speculation as to what could happen if certain things do or don't happen. It's this application in the context of the code and related items, so be aware.
Okay, thank you.
Which I think brings us, since I'm assuming we're not going to start another ex, well, I assume you want to continue your objector's position before we get to Mr. Tarantino. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
You're now, you're the objector on the hot seat, so to speak. You're not, you're not giving up the seat just yet, and therefore, it makes no sense to call anybody beyond your current witness, correct? Well, well, Mr. Tarantino needs to be here with his witness-
You mean the next hearing?
And if the board decides to allow Mr. Gross's new expert to testify, then he's next. If the board does not, Mr. Tarantino is next, but at 9:50, it's not going to be anybody.
Well, I would just say procedurally, we've been at this for a very long time. They have known the issue, you know, whatever they wanted to present it, they had the opportunity to plan and have an expert ready to testify. Their next witness, I believe, is the planner's report, and they've submitted a report, he should be ready to testify at the next meeting, and I think that should be what's addressed at the next meeting. Mr. Gross is going to have his expert prepare a report, including credentials and everything else. He says he's going to do it 10 days before the next meeting. I may want more time than those 10 days to respond to that, whether in writing or otherwise. I don't think I should have to wait until this issue of this witness they're springing on at the last minute before we get to a next witness, has had a report submitted, you know, over a year ago.
So is your proposal to go to the next witness, Mr. Tarantino's witness, and then we'll address Mr. Gross's witness at a later date?
I'm fine with that.
That could be the case, yes. It all depends on-
Well, my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, based on the timeframe, is that any report that Mr. Gross intends to provide to us be provided a more than 10 days in advance of the next hearing? Mr.-
Well, I'm going to just, would want to know how much time Mr. Giannetti needs, because I don't want to, you know, there comes-
Well, I think, I think we go back to the favorite question, when's the next hearing? Mr. Coys and I have spoken, and I believe he has a recommendation.
December 12th.
A portion of December 12th, correct?
Correct, in anticipation of another application as well, yes. Right now, right now for December 12th, we have 303 Amla Road, that's just there for a possible extension. That's one of the properties that the township is still working to acquire. We've kept this meeting open in anticipation of this application, and also the possibility of Western Road as well.
I know, but if we're going to bring in Wesson, that's just going to cut.
Board's call, because you can anticipate this next week.
We just wanted to give the board the options, and for the board to decide how you would like to schedule it.
If I may, and I realize I'm just one small part, I'm here at the board's pleasure, but I'm out of state on the 12th of December.
With all due respect, it's not his witness that's testifying.
I don't, don't even. The issue is whether the board wants to fully for this applicant, or significant portion and the other. I don't believe we will be finished with the other application next week either.
Right. But I'm just wondering, how many other witnesses do the objectors have?
Well, we might be able to address one of those issues tonight on the objection we have to the Susan Osh presentation.
Right now, we have one other expert witness. The board will have to deal with the other witness issues at the appropriate time. I don't think I want to muddy the waters tonight, Mr. Giannetti, with that issue.
No, it's just because I'm just trying to, you know, when we get back here next week, if we're going to try to squeeze in a next, you know, continuation with Wesson.
You, you promised, just as a reminder, though I am partially disregarding it, you promised the other applicant next week was pretty much theirs, so there's no-
No, no, you know, next week, I'm just wondering if it's continuing to December 12th.
As for that one, my recollection is, we still have a witness to finish cross-examination, as well as public comment, and then we're going to have potentially additional witnesses that the board is going to have to address the propriety of those witnesses, and I believe, even if you get past those, I believe the applicant plans on bringing at least one rebuttal witness. I'm not talking about Mr. Giannetti's application, I'm talking about the other one. Mr. Giannetti has others too, but that's a whole, another issue for another time also. The recommendation from Mr. Coys and myself is a significant portion of the 12th to Mr. Giannetti, assuming his client is willing to grant the extinction on the TOD.
Yeah. So let's, let's get to that, yeah. Till the end of December?
Yes.
Okay.
We're having Christmas at the Giannettis.
So we would be fine going with Mr. Rodriguez next on the 12th, he's available that date.
Okay.
And then that'll give Mr. Grace time to carry the report, you know, and then the next meeting is probably not until-
Mr. Tarantino, have your expert witness at the meeting on the 12th.
Yeah. No, I think that's probably will be the order, because I have a feeling we're going to be having some-
Make sure, if we, if we don't get past the issue that's just been addressed, he needs to go. So your expert needs to be here on the 12th. The expert, not the additional witness you're looking for, that's a separate issue for a separate point. You signed your life form?
I think Mr. Gross's expert report, though, needs to be in before December 12th.
Assuming we have come to a decision on the 12th, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that Mr. Gross's expert report be in the hands of Mr. Coys for distribution by 3 o'clock on the 25th of November, which is, I believe, that Monday before Thanksgiving. That'll be Mr. Giannetti's homework for Thanksgiving, among many other things, I'm sure. That would give him a little more than two, about two weeks or so, take a look.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's Monday 25th.
It gives you, you, Mr. Gross, about two and a half weeks to get it prepared, and Mr. Gross, about, Mr. Giannetti, about the same point.
That's fine, thank you.
Deal with it.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the motion is to continue this application without further notice to Thursday, December 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, the expert report from objector number two must be provided to Mr. Coys by 3:00 PM, Monday, December, Monday, November 25th, 2024, for distribution to Mr. Giannetti, the objectors, and the board, and the board will address the issue on the night of the 12th. Mr. Tarantino's expert needs to be here.
Right. And the time of decision's extended to the end of the year.
Time of decision's been extended to December 31st.
Already signed it.
Excellent. So with that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Comedian LaPony.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pizin.
Yes.
Chair Sriraj.
Yes. Okay. And with that, we do have a meeting next week, and, is Coys anything else? Okay. So that'll entertain a motion of-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, see everyone next week.